I'd like to call the meeting to order. All right, I'll call this meeting to order. This is a special call meeting of the Williamson County Board of Education, December 9th. I want to first say thank you to our deputies, Mitchell Britton, Bobby Rutledge, Perry Dillahay, and Donald Maugh. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here and for your service. We will start, board members, by recording attendance. Please do so on your devices. Mr. Galworth, can you acknowledge your attendance? Mr. Galworth. Can you give a verbal yes or a, or hear? You may be on mute.
Pull it back up. Pull it back up, please.
Mr. Galworth. Can we get a verbal record of your attendance, please? Board members, I apologize. We need to get this resolved before the meeting presume, resumes.
Hey, can y'all hear me?
Yes, yes. Mr. Galworth, are you present for the meeting?
I am present.
Thank you.
Ryan, can you pull the video up, please? Ryan, Florida.
There are 12 members present.
If I may, Mr. Chair, just as a double check, if you would, please pull the video up, Tim. Now, Mr. Galworth, would you mind reaffirming that you're present?
Do you need me to say something, Jay?
Yes, sir. I just wanted you to say something where there's also a visual.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have 12 present. Thank you. All right, we'll now move to a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Before we move to items of public interest, I have asked Lisa Carson, one of our attorneys, for the school system to come forward and for the benefit of the board, also for the benefit of the public, to share with us the context for the reason why we're meeting tonight and what criteria we are being bound by in terms of the decisions we'll be making throughout the course of this meeting. Ms. Carson.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As you all are aware, the purpose of this meeting is to reconsider the placement of five library books in Williamson County libraries, four of them in high school libraries, one in high school and middle school libraries. These five books were initially considered by the Board of Education in June of 2023. Challenges were brought to these five library books under a state law called the Age Appropriate Materials Act, which requires that school library materials be consistent with the educational mission of the schools and appropriate for the age and maturity level of the students who may access them. When a challenge is brought, the act requires that the Board of Education make a determination as to these issues. Now, last June, when the board considered these books, it accepted the recommendations of two committees that had been appointed to reconsider the books. At that time, the Age Appropriate Materials Act did not have specific statutory criteria in it regarding what was deemed to be age appropriate and what was not. And the board very candidly relied upon the recommendations of the two committees and voted to accept those recommendations, but did not expressly address the questions posed by the act. That is, whether the materials were age appropriate and whether they were consistent with the educational mission of the schools. The board's action was challenged in litigation here in Chancery Court in Williamson County by several citizens. And a recent court ruling requires that this board again review these five books and specifically answer the questions that the act poses. That is, are the books appropriate for the age and maturity level of the students who may access them? And are they consistent with the educational mission? The previous request for reconsideration of these books was addressed by the board under a previous version of the law and a previous version of your policy 4.403, which did not have, as I said, specific objective standards for judging when a book was age appropriate. The law has since changed during the pendency of the litigation that involved these five library books. And the court has directed that this board apply its current policy and the current amended version of the statute, which provides specific categories of materials that are deemed per se inappropriate. The new version of the Age Appropriate Materials Act, which applies to your decision tonight, lists categories of materials that are per se not appropriate for grades K through 12. These include excess violence, nudity, sadomasochistic abuse, sexual conduct, which includes patently offensive representations of certain sexual acts, sexual excitement, which is defined to include condition of arousal of human genitals, patently offensive material, and material appealing to the purient interest. So those are categories that have specific definitions as outlined in Tennessee law, and those definitions are incorporated into your board policy. If you find that one of those statutory definitions is met, Tennessee law requires that you find that the material is not age appropriate and that it is removed and always in Tennessee libraries. But that it does not fall within one of these per se prohibitions, then as a board, you have some flexibility about allowing the books access to those materials at all grade levels where they are currently available or limiting the grade levels where they're. The court and our. maturity levels of students, as well as ensuring that the materials, that the evaluation of the materials meets constitutional muster. But the library materials decision tree is a tool that's been developed to assist you. What it governs your. What it governs your decision is state law, federal constitutional law, and your policy, which the Board has found complies with the law as it is presented. The Board policy also
Check, check. Test one, two. Test one, two. Test one, two, three. Test one, two, three.
I'm sorry to ask you to do this, but would you mind starting over with your remarks so that we can make sure everyone has a chance to hear all of that clearly?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
There's nothing a group of people loves better than listening to a lawyer say the same thing twice, so. I hope for the sake of the folks sitting out here that they really couldn't hear me the first time, so at least when I say it the second time, it'll be new. Board members, as you know, from just a minute ago when I said it, the purpose of this meeting is to reconsider challenges to five library books that were initially challenged and considered by the Board last summer in June 2023. The challenges that were brought to these books were brought under a state law called the Age Appropriate Materials Act, which requires that school library materials be consistent with the educational mission of the schools and that they be appropriate for the age and maturity levels of the students who may access them. When a challenge is brought under the act, the act ultimately requires that this Board make a determination as to whether the books are age appropriate and as to whether they are consistent with the educational mission. And if they are not either one or both of those things, they must be removed from school libraries. Last June, when the Board considered these books, it accepted the recommendations of two committees that had been appointed to to conduct the reconsideration. And when the Board voted to accept the committee's recommendations, the Board did not make explicit determinations that the books were or were not age appropriate or that they were or were not consistent with the educational mission. They simply approved the recommendations of the committees. A group of citizens challenged that action in court, in Chancery Court here in Williamson County. And a recent court ruling requires that this Board again review these five books and answer those specific questions, whether these books are or are not appropriate for the age and maturity levels of the students who may access the materials and whether they are consistent with the educational mission of the school. Now, the previous request for reconsideration of these books was addressed under a previous version of the statute and a previous version of your policy. And that statute at that time did not have specific standards for determining when a book was age appropriate or was not. During the pendency of the litigation, the law changed and some very specific standards about what is considered to be age appropriate under Tennessee law per our General Assembly's directive were adopted. The new version of the Age Appropriate Materials Act actually lists specific categories of materials that are per se deemed not appropriate for libraries in K through 12 public schools in Tennessee. These include, and they're defined specifically in the statute, excess violence, well, actually in another statute that is referenced in the statute. They include excess violence, nudity, sadomasochistic abuse, sexual conduct, which is defined to include patently offensive representations of certain sexual acts, sexual excitement, patently offensive material, and material appealing to the purient interests. These categories have specific definitions as outlined in Tennessee law. And those definitions are incorporated into your Board policy, which the court has found complies with the laws that currently exist. If you find that any of these books violates the statutory definitions that are per se prohibitions, then Tennessee law requires that you remove the materials from all Williamson County school libraries. However, if you find that there is mature content in the books that does not rise to the level of a per se violation under the statute, then you have the discretion as a Board to determine whether that mature content is appropriate for any age level. And you can allow it for all age level or all grade levels in a particular band such as high school or middle school, or you can limit it to particular grade levels within that band. The court has specifically directed that the Board apply its current policy, which does include a library materials decision tree, which is a tool for you to utilize in assessing whether material is consistent with the educational mission of the schools, whether it's age appropriate, as well as whether it meets, removal of it would meet federal constitutional standards. That decision tree is a tool that's been developed to assist the Board in ensuring that its decisions comply with both the state statute and federal constitutional law. But the Age Appropriate Materials Act is the statute that sets the questions that you are to answer tonight. And the court's order directs you in how to do those in terms of following your existing policy. And the Age Appropriate Materials Act and your policy govern, are the controlling authorities governing your decisions tonight. The Board policy also provides for a recommendation from the librarian at the school from which the challenge first arose. And so each of you have received recommendations from the librarians at Ravenwood and Franklin where these challenges first originated. And the court's order did not directly require librarian recommendations, but the court's order did require that we follow our policy, which does include recommendations from the librarians. Those are there for you as a resource, just as the decision tree is there for you as a resource. But as a Board, you are directed to make the decision, taking into account those resources and any other resources that you deemed appropriate in making your determination. The librarians did conclude that each of the five books was consistent with the educational mission of the schools and did determine that they were age appropriate for the students who may access them with a couple of caveats as to particular books. As to Speak, which is the only one of the five novels located in middle school libraries as well as high schools, there was a suggestion from the librarians that parents of students for whom the material may be too mature at the middle school level should be made specifically aware of their ability to opt out of their student having access to that book. And as to Where the Craw Dad Sing, the librarian's professional recommendation was that the book not be removed. But the librarian who reviewed the book did acknowledge that there are descriptions of five consensual sexual acts or near sexual acts and one non-consensual act that potentially run afoul of one of the definitions in the state law. Your task pursuant to the court's order is to decide whether these books are age appropriate for the age and maturity level of the students who have access to them. And the Age Appropriate Materials Act also requires that you address whether the books are consistent with the educational mission of the schools. The mission statement of Williamson County schools is, we exist to provide all students with a quality education that supports their intellectual, physical, emotional, and social development. The vision statement provides Williamson County schools will provide a supportive environment where students are challenged to pursue excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts. While the court's order relates to the state law, board members must also be mindful of federal constitutional law, which allows you to make decisions regarding which materials are appropriate for the educational environment and which materials are appropriate for specific age levels, but limits your discretion to remove materials based solely on viewpoint or ideology. So when applying the state law, you must do so consistent with federal law. State law and Board policy require that a book be removed from Williamson County libraries if the book is not appropriate for the age and maturity levels of the students who may access it or is not consistent with the educational mission of the schools. To remove a book from Williamson County libraries where it is currently held, there must be a majority vote of this Board to do so, based upon one or both of these reasons. That concludes the extremely boring section of this meeting. If you don't have any questions, I will cede the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Carson. All right, we will now move into items of public interest, our public comment period. We do have 26 individuals signed up to speak. We will be allowing one minute per person. As normal, I will call two names at a time so that you can be prepared for the, follow the person in front of you. I would ask, as always, that we show courtesy and respect to each member of the public who is speaking and limit any kind of comments in the audience during the time someone is speaking. Okay, we will start with Angela Frederick, followed by David Rivera.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to me. I want to acknowledge that you all are put into a very tough position, okay? This law as written is extremely broad and, in my opinion, is unconstitutional. It covers way too many topics. And if we remove books based on the law, we will be trampling on the rights of students. I'm going to go ahead and assume that people will come up here tonight and allege that there is obscenity in pornography in our libraries. And I want to speak emphatically against that. And if you believe that there is such material in your child's school and you're not there making sure that that's not happening, you need to visit your school. You need to talk to your child's teachers, your child's librarians. Nobody came into this profession to, you know, have children be in the presence of pornography at school. It's ridiculous, it's untrue, and it's harmful to teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. David Rivera, followed by Olivia Carroll. And I should have also said that the monitor on the podium has the time, so please be mindful of that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, we are here today because our state representative, Gina Bolso, sued this Board on behalf of a group of plaintiffs who may or may not even have children in Williamson County schools. I'd like to remind the Board that you do not represent Gina Bolso, you do not represent Moms for Liberty, nor do you represent any special interest group, political party, or religion. You represent all the people of Williamson County, and you are tasked with maintaining the sterling reputation of our schools. That reputation is at stake here today. If we give in to the culture warriors here, they will be back again, and they will not stop with books. Many people moved to Williamson County specifically for the schools. When our children graduate and go out into the world, what are people going to say about where they come from? Oh, you're from Williamson County? Don't they ban books there? Removing these books is the opposite of liberty. But here's the good news. Every parent in the county has the ability to restrict their children from reading any of these books that they find objectionable. What I find objectionable is the people who want to prevent everyone else from reading these books. Thank you.
Olivia Carroll, followed by Cory Martin.
Hi, everyone. My name is Olivia Carroll, and I'm here to speak on behalf of my sister Sydney Carroll, who's at college. At my Williamson County private high school, Speak by Lori Hall's Anderson, which is about a high school girl being raped by a peer, sparked important discussions in my freshman year English classroom about consent and seeking help after sexual violence. According to the Journal of Adolescent Health, one in nine girls and one in 20 boys will experience sexual assault before turning 18. With 42,000 students in WCS, that's potentially 3,345 students in our schools that will be affected by sexual violence before they graduate. If one student reads Speak and learns about consent or finds courage in Melinda's story, it deserves a place in WCS libraries. This book encourages us to speak even when it may be difficult and the odds may be stacked against us. I encourage the school board to use their own voices for good and not to silence the voices of characters that, while fictional, represent the experiences of far too many students in our own schools. Thank you.
Cory Martin, followed by Sarah Lanning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Cory Martin of One Wilco, and I'm asking you to not restrict the five books that are being considered tonight. I know that some of you will probably say that you are bound by law to restrict these books. I think, as Ms. Carson explained, there is more leeway there. I would ask you to ask her if a declaratory order would be appropriate for for these books tonight. I was hoping that you'd be able to ask some of the attorneys that are usually here what they think would be the legal ramifications of restricting these books. But not only the legal ramifications, but what the message would be to our educators and to our librarians and to our administrators when we say that we don't trust them to select the books for our students. I believe that restricting these books will cause further frustration among our educators, leading to more burnout and more expensive departures. I believe a restriction will add to the possibility of more First Amendment litigation. I'm out of time. Please don't restrict these books. Thank you.
After Sarah Lanning, we have Justin Bumpus.
Sarah Lanning, District 5 resident, parent, and teacher. I sent an email earlier, but as our English Department Chair, I would be remiss if I didn't speak publicly tonight. So friends, Romans, countrymen, lend me your ears just for a few seconds. In To Kill a Mockingbird, Atticus Tells Scout, "You never really understand a person until you climb into his skin and walk around in it." Literature allows us to do just that, to explore the human condition. Sometimes the human experience is difficult and uncomfortable, yet stories also teach us how to overcome. Sir Philip Sidney said that "The purpose of literature is to teach and to delight. We teach skills aligned with standards, but we also call on the muses to teach empathy, resilience, and the beauty of redemption." I think of one text that describes all sorts of horrors, including violent crucifixion. Even it says, "Let the redeemed of the Lord tell their story, those he redeemed from trouble." But back to Caesar, "I mourn the loss of the library at Alexandria. All that knowledge and art burned. Pulling books is a slippery slope. It starts with five, but where does it end? I don't know."
Time.
It'd sort of be like shooting a mockingbird, wouldn't it? Thank you.
Justin Bumpus, and then Bill Petty.
I'm discussing book bans and how that phrase is being weaponized. When cigarettes and alcohol are not allowed in schools, we don't call it a ban. Removing cigarettes and alcohol from schools is an acknowledgement that they are not appropriate for schoolchildren and do not provide any educational benefit. There is no difference between the removal of cigarettes and alcohol in school and the removal of the books in question. Doing the right thing and ensuring these books are not in WCS libraries does not ban them. Removing these books simply empowers those ultimately responsible for a child's education to decide if they want their students to decide if they want their students reading them. These books will still be available at local libraries and booksellers. In case there is any doubt on who the ultimate decision-maker on a child's education is, it's the parent. It's not the teachers, it's not the principals, and it's not the people in the front of this room. The parent makes that decision about their child's education. I'm asking this board to do the right thing, ensure these books do not stay in WC school libraries, ensuring parents' God-given right to decide what is best for their child's education. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bill Petty, and I'm speaking for myself tonight. I just want to reiterate what Lisa Carson said. She quoted, you know, chapter and verse. This is state law. Tennessee Code 49633803 is quite explicit. And I watched last year as you painstakingly rewrote the library policy. It's completely different than the one you had before. So you have a policy now, you have state law, you have direction. Last year, when the committees recommended that they keep the books, their problem was, well, we don't have guidance. Both committees said that. Well, you do have guidance now. So you have to follow the law, you have to follow the guidance, and it's spelled out, it's explicit, and I expect that to happen, and I'm sure it will. So thank you very much.
We have Joel Malone, followed by Anna Skates Haley.
Hi, I'm Dr. Joel Malone, and I-
Is that appropriate? Right there, is that appropriate?
Ma'am, please proceed, Mr. Malone.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Joel Malone, I have a PhD in this area. Thank you for your service, by the way. What makes this issue so difficult is that most of the public does not, is not aware of the adolescent sex hormone explosion that I am, and its complexity. So I'm going to give you some quick science here. Adolescents, males, testosterone explodes by up to 30 times, in some cases, within two years, aged 13 to 15, and that puts in 10 to 20 times more than the females. Same time, females' estrogen explodes to 17.5 times the males. Oxytocin, which is important, you know, in bonding, increases by five times in both sexes, but it affects the sexes differently. Next, and probably most importantly, dopamine explodes during this time period, too. Early sexual conditioning is what we're talking about here. We're talking about brain molding, we're talking about changes at the genetic level, and I think that that needs to seriously be looked at. I would ask you to please follow the Tennessee law regarding age-appropriate materials. Thank you.
Anna Skates Haley, followed by Genevieve Pejost, and I will respectfully ask that we refrain from any distractions in the audience, please, just out of courtesy to our speakers. Thank you.
I'd like to take my time to share one testimony from a student. When I first read Speak, I was in eighth grade, and reading an experience similar to mine, in fifth grade, fifth grade, I was sexually assaulted. When it happened again, three years after reading this book, I found comfort in knowing that there were others like me and that it was not my fault. The main character helped me see that. We need to keep this novel on the shelves so students know that they can ask for help and receive it when they're ready. This book can be removed from shelves when it is no longer socially relevant. Good luck with that. Emily Moran, 17 years old. Limiting students' access to books that address complex issues does not protect them from those experiences. They happen to fifth graders. Books can be windows, and books can be mirrors. They can safely let us into a complex experience we may not have otherwise been able to understand, and they can reflect back to us our own experiences in ways that help us to feel less alone. While these books may not be for everyone, for the kids who need a window or a mirror, they are everything, and for their sake, I hope we keep these stories on the shelves. Thank you.
After Genevieve Pejost, we have David Waller.
Good. All right. Prior justification for keeping books with graphic descriptions of rape in our schools was so that students could experience it without experiencing it. I don't know about you, but I never want my kid to experience rape in any way, and I am happy to say that the state law of Tennessee now agrees with me. State law provides that any of the following are not appropriate for the age or maturity level of any student K through 12. That includes sadomasochistic abuse, meaning flagellation, torture, or physical restraint by or upon a person for the purpose of sexual gratification. If you read Speak, you know that that is clearly in this book in more than one occasion, also in many of the other books, but Speak is found in multiple middle schools, and some of the high schools have over 40 copies of this book. And now, we have the law behind us to ensure that we can get them out. But don't worry, if you do believe that this book is beneficial for your child, you can still order it on Amazon, they will still be able to read it, you just won't be able to get it in a public school library anymore. And as a side, I'm just going to, Family Life Curriculum would be a great place to have those conversations. That's all.
Thank you. Do we have David Waller, and then Peg Residi?
Hello, my name is David Waller. I'm a proud husband of a WCS employee and father of two WCS graduates. It's amazing to me how the state is arguing for parental choice with vouchers, stating it's important for parents to make the education choices for the kids, yet now parental choice is not appropriate for library books. I wonder how many of you school board members have contacted any of the WCS school librarians in your district and discussed these books in question. Did you know that all WCS parents may request any book not be checked out by their student, by their child, just by a simple phone call or email to the librarian? So a guideline is already in place. Think about this as you make your vote tonight. We already have guidelines in place if you don't want your child to read the book. For those of you who do vote to remove these books, which of you plan to contact all the private schools in our county and tell them they must remove these as well? Wait a second, those rules don't apply to the Williamson County School Board, the rules you make as Williamson County School Boards don't apply to them. Remember that.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Peg Residi, followed by Catherine McKinney.
The Perks of Being a Wallflower was recently removed from Rutherford and Knox County schools in compliance with the Tennessee Age Appropriate Materials Act. There is good reason. This story includes a middle schooler's suicide and a suicide attempt, child sexual abuse, mental illness, racist, and homophobic tropes, teen pregnancy, non-consensual sex, sexual voyeurism, extensive drug and alcohol use, and explicit sexual descriptions, including oral and anal sex. According to the U.S. Department of Justice, obscenity is not protected under First Amendment rights to free speech, and violations of federal obscenity laws are criminal offenses. The U.S. courts use the Miller Test to determine if a material is obscene. Please do look up the Miller Test. Not only does the perks of being a wallflower not belong in WCS due to the Tennessee Age Appropriate Act, those allowing children to possess this book and others like it can also be criminally prosecuted under federal law. Thank you.
Catherine McKinney, followed by Ally McIntyre.
Hello, I'd like to address those on the school board that voted for these books in our schools. Teachers are supposed to be role models. They report to a principal who, through the superintendent, reports to you. Thus, school board members should be role models. Our state legislator had to write a law that only age-appropriate materials should be in schools. Descriptions of rape, arousal, oral sex, it's not appropriate in any K through 12 school. Williamson County refused to take that objectionable content out of school libraries. So my question is, are you telling those below you, the students, that they should just break laws whenever they feel like it? How are you a role model when you disobey laws and then have to be sued? You fight it, you spend $90,000 of my money to, how is that morally or fiscally responsible? I'd like to underscore another salient point here. English, it's one of the foundations of education. Math, science, and English. To do well in the world, you need a good grasp of English, which is not just grammar and sentence structure, but use of words.
Time.
Vocabulary, words. I'd like to read from you, from Merriam-Webster.
Ma'am.
The ban, banning, to prohibit universally.
Ma'am, time. Thank you.
It's not banning.
Ally McIntyre, followed by, after Ally, Jenny Davis.
Hey, good evening. I'm Ally McIntyre. I'm a mom of three and current WCS employee, speaking in my own capacity to remind you that to some of our most vulnerable students, these books are more than just ink on paper, they are lifelines. These stories confront pain, isolation, and resilience. They reflect the struggles our students face every day, grief, identity, trauma, and the search for belonging. Why would we take these mirrors and lifelines away? Our expert librarians chose these books with care, knowing that literature builds empathy and fosters understanding. Removing these books is not protecting students, it isolates them. It tells them that their struggles are too shameful, their identity is too controversial, and their stories are unworthy of being told. Our students, even here in Williamson County, do carry heavy burdens and deserve to see themselves in the pages of a book, knowing they are not alone. Respectfully, can we please get back to trusting educators and the transformative power of stories? Our libraries are and should remain places of freedom, discovery, and hope for every student, because the reality is, keeping some of these books on the shelves may save a life.
Jenny Davis, followed by Logan Pasquantino.
Thank you so much. My name is Jenny Davis. I am a parent to two WCS students, and today I speak in defense of our school libraries and the critical importance of maintaining diverse, inclusive reading resources for our students. The five books under review represent more than just stories. They are educational tools that have been carefully vetted by our professional librarians. Some of these books have been a part of our collection for over 20 years. Each book has significant merit, winning national awards, being featured on the AP Literature Exam, and even winning student-voted competitions like Ravenwood High's Book Madness. If our goal as WCS is to enhance the education of our students, removing a book that is on the AP Literature Exam is not a good decision. Our librarians unanimously confirm that these books are age-appropriate. That doesn't necessarily mean that they're appropriate for every single child at that age, and that is why we, as the parents, have the ability to restrict a book for our child. Thank you.
Do we have Logan Pasquantino? Okay, we'll move on to Eve Boger, followed by Carolyn Brown.
I do not envy y'all's position tonight and appreciate you being here and listening to all of us. It means a lot. I do hope that each of you have taken the time to read these five books in their entirety. Otherwise, you are relying on fear-based rhetoric taken out of context. I assume you have all spoken with students to hear their thoughts on these books. For a lot of them, these heavy topics represent their lived experiences. Hard things do happen to kids, that is fact. Reading about difficult topics, however, can make a student feel like they are not alone. It can teach them to think critically and to learn to view others with empathy. Please do not underestimate our students' need to develop as individuals, and please do not disregard their right to do so. I urge you to consider other options besides an outright ban, things like incorporating age or grade limits and including trigger warnings, continuing the opt-out option for parents. A complete ban removes any opportunity for parents and students to choose what books their teen reads. How can we claim that WCS pursues excellence in academia if we ban all the books that make a select few uncomfortable? Thank you.
Carolyn Brown, followed by Lisa Churich.
One Kindle reviewer aptly states, "The field guide to North American teenager is filled with foul language, rebellion, disrespect, teen sexual escapades, and alcohol abuse. Students slip out of school to their cars to do more than just kiss. Other kids who are off having sex as if it's nothing more than a recreational activity, another downloading porn on his phone. Porn is mentioned multiple times. According to the addictionhelp.com, 14% of the population is addicted to pornography. Making it look cool normalizes porn and encourages its exploration. As a nurse, I can tell you that there is a rise in erectile dysfunction, the inability to have actual sexual relations without the use of pornography, and a myriad of problems in achieving intimate relationships. Is this the message we want our schools? A place that molds our children into responsible adults to condone? Please remove this book from WCS school system. We are not a counseling service."
Lisa Churich, followed by John Watts.
Hey, y'all. I'm thinking maybe y'all may have read these books. I hope you spend the time to read them. I mean, this one is kind of a poignant story about a nine-year-old who loses his dad in 9/11. They made a Tom Hanks movie of it. Pretty cool. Everybody says, hey, this is great. No, it's not. It's really not, and I would ask y'all to take this out of the books, of the libraries. For whatever reason, there's a subplot, this gratuitous sex of the grandmother that goes on for generations, and it, for a couple generations, and it talks about it in here, anal sex, grabbing somebody's breasts, exploring every orifice she has. It's not appropriate. If you want a story about a child that experienced something through 9/11 and is trying to find meaning in their, in their parent's death, I believe there's probably other books that our librarians can choose. Please consider taking this one out of our schools. Thank you.
John Watts, and then after John, Penny Lukinoff.
Hi there, my name's John Watts. I appreciate the privilege to stand here before this board, and I appreciate the work that you guys do. I got to say this, I'm hearing a lot of the same excuses and reasoning being brought up. School library system is not a therapy session, and it's not a vehicle for therapy. We're here to teach and educate, okay? And the fear porn that's going on here about banning, that's a complete lie, it's a misnomer. These books are available, if they want them, in their, in their houses, they can get them on Amazon, they can go wherever, and we can go wherever they want to get these books. We do not have to provide them, and I'll close on this point. And I'm looking at every one of you here, every one of you, one day are going to take your last breath, and you're going to step out of the dimension called time into eternity, and you're going to be, you're going to be meeting with your maker. And Jesus said it right here, he says it right here. He said to his disciples, "Things that cause people to stumble are bound to come, but woe to anyone whom they come from." Okay? It would be better for them to be thrown in the sea-
Sir.
-with a millstone around their neck-
Sir.
-than to, than to cause one of the little ones to stumble. I warn you. That's Jesus saying that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Before you start, may I just once again ask the audience to refrain from comments? We'll, we'll keep time up here, we'll handle it from our side, but please be respectful and courteous of our speakers. Even if you disagree with their comments, please be respectful and courteous. Penny Lukinoff, followed by Stephen Hickey.
Hi, I'm Penny Lukinoff from Brentwood. I'm here to, thank you so much, by the way, for your service, really do appreciate it. Extremely Loud and Incredibly Close is an inappropriate book, I believe, for the school library. As someone else just described, it contains very sexual passages which I am uncomfortable reading aloud in public. In fact, if I did, I might violate FCC rules. As, as someone else has pointed out, it contains all kinds of graphic oral and anal sex, just everything. And I believe having a book like this in schools implies that the authority of this educational institution is supportive of this behavior at this age. People might say, well, kids see this stuff online anyway, to which I believe you should say, so what? We're a school, not a TikTok video. We're a public institution promoting and providing education, sound reason, and good judgment. We are not in the business of promoting early sexual encounters or promiscuity, which studies have long demonstrated caused all kinds of problems which can affect a child to the rest of their lives. Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
Stephen Hickey, followed by Darwin Jordan.
Good evening, I'm Steve Hickey. In my email to you all last night, I spoke to the need to do your duty for the protection of our children. Today, I speak to you about your need to do your duty for the protection of our nation. When I spoke with some of you a year and a half ago about this matter, I believe I read a passage from the 1947 newspaper op-ed titled, "When Will Their Objectives Be Met?" As my time is limited, I encourage you to research this piece, but will share the following excerpt. Corrupt the young, get them away from religion, get them interested in sex. Corrupt the young, get them away from religion, get them interested in sex, make them superficial. Revolutions focus on the youth, and they frequently use sex as a tool to radicalize the young to the revolution. But whatever is perceived as the cause, the issue is never the cause, the issue is always the revolution. This meeting is being framed by many in the audience as a fight for the First Amendment. What it really is, is an attempt to keep pushing the boundaries of acceptance further and punishing those who dissent. I stand before you, asking you to do your duty in accordance with the Age Appropriate Materials Act and reject dispirious emotional arguments presented in opposition to this duty. Draw that necessary line in the sand. Thank you.[633.75][633.75](APPLAUSE).
Hi, good evening. My name is Darlin Jordan. I'm a retired Williamson County school teacher. I purchased all five of these books, and I would like to say that I have bookmarked them. I've done my homework for age-inappropriate books as well. One Franklin High School librarian told me, "There are gay students who need to have, need to be able to have books to read also. No, these books should not be purchased with taxpayer dollars, nor should they be allowed in our library, no matter how long they've been in our libraries. Let the parents be in charge of their own children's books at home." One book titled, "The Perks of Being a Wallflower," was also included in the American Library Association's 10 Most Frequently Challenged Books, and this was listed five times in the last 10 years. So on page 21, it does say, "An example of what we've been talking about tonight." I will read it. It says, "Dear friend, do you know what masturbation is? I think you probably do, because you are older than I. But just in case, I'll tell you."
Ma'am.
And in Matthew 18:6, like John Watts says,
Ma'am, time.
"Do not allow these little ones to stumble." Thank you.[712.54][712.54](APPLAUSE).
The last three speakers, Amy Sardakie, Elliot Franklin, Matt Boone.
Good evening, my name is Amy Sardakie, and I taught at Ravenwood High for many years, and I retired six months ago. So thank you for your service. Others have already spoken about the accolades that these books have, have received for the beautiful way that they're written and the empathy and issues, very important issues that they discuss, the fact that they're on the AP Literature Test that the College Board authors at Ravenwood last year, one of them won the Book Madness Award. But I would like to speak to you about the effect that your discussion and your decision on this issue has on Ravenwood and all Williamson County teachers and librarians. School librarians have a master's degree in library science. They are readers. They want kids to be readers. They're passionate about student mental health and student health, and they're on the front lines of literacy, which is not improving, along with their English teachers. And English teachers and librarians do not want these books banned.
Ma'am, time.
Instead of tar-
Time.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.[802.73][802.73](APPLAUSE). Elliot Franklin, followed by Matt Boone. Those are our two final speakers.
Good evening, thank you for your time, and for those that responded to my email, I think it was very good and we had some good debate. I also appreciate the lawyer giving the explanation at the beginning of what, of what you're up against. Again, it's not about censorship, it's about following the law. It's interesting that some comments have been made about, you know, you represent the entire district, you represent all taxpayers, and some of the comments from some of the board members have been, "No, we only represent those who have children in schools." If that's the case, then there's a lot of people out here that are gonna get their tax money back, or there's a lot of you that couldn't be serving because you don't have children in the schools currently. So I'd like you to remember that. Again, you asked for the law to be clarified, which it was, it's very strict now, it has the definitions of what was read by the attorney. I think all five books clearly meet the restrictions of needing to be removed, and I would ask that you uphold the law. Thank you.[859.31][859.31](APPLAUSE).
Hello, my name is Matt Boone. I wasn't planning on being here tonight, but that's the material that came to me, and that the, the court order with, with the language in it, I, I mean, I just saw this as smut. It just is degrading information that, why do our students, how can they benefit from this? Our, our mission statement is to challenge them with excellence in academics, athletics, arts? What does this have to do with, with excellence? They, we're not banning this, we're removing it. I think you should remove it, I think there's a slippery slope out there that, once we degrade our morals, our traditional values, our scriptural values with this kind of stuff, it's a slippery slope, and what comes next? I'm sure there's worse books, but these worst books are probably gonna be coming in next, right? In the magazines. I mean, why not? I just think we need to uphold our moral values of, of Williamson County. Please get rid of these books. They're not banning them, get rid of these books. Thank you.[937.43][937.43](APPLAUSE).
All right, thank you to all of our speakers. We will now move on to approval of the agenda. Please, if you have a motion or a second, please do that on your iPad. Any discussion of the agenda? All right, we're ready to vote. Are we queued up on the, are we gonna do a voice vote? Okay. All in favor of approval of the agenda, say aye. Any opposed? Agenda's approved.
Mr. Galbraith.
I'm sorry. Mr. Galbraith, how do you vote?
Do you need a margin?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith, are you able to hear us? Okay, in, in the absence of hearing from him, we'll just mark him as absent on this For the sake of this one, let's just record him as absent on this vote, and we can try to get him ready for the next one. Do we need to re-vote?
Yeah. You did not vote. You already voted.
Can you?
Can you hear me?
Yes, but, but I don't know if, okay. We need to be on camera, though, right? Can you turn the video on, Jay?
I'll vote. Yeah, I hear you. Can you all hear me?
Can hear you, now we can see you. How do you vote?
Okay, yeah, aye.
Okay. Do you all wanna record that vote?
Call the vote.
Can you call the vote?
Call it, Miss 12-0. Call the vote.
The vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Okay. Agenda's approved, thank you. All right, we'll now move on to new business, and as everyone knows, we have five books that we'll be talking about tonight, voting on. The first, one of those, Extremely Loud and Incredibly Close, I'm gonna read what's on the agenda, and then we'll entertain a motion. Determination of whether the following library book, that being Extremely Loud and Incredibly Close, is appropriate for the age and maturity levels of the students who may access the books in Williamson County school libraries, and whether the book is consistent with the educational mission of Williamson County schools. Is there a motion? Mr. Bostic has made a motion, is there a second? You wanna state your motion, Mr. Bostic?
In response to the objection raised to Extremely Loud and Incredibly Close, I move that the book be removed from Williamson County Schools' library collections because it is not appropriate for the age and maturity levels of the students who have access to it, and/or is not consistent with the educational mission of Williamson County Schools.
Thank you. Dr. Driggers, you've seconded that motion?
Yes.
Okay. Before we get into discussion on this, Mr. Cook, do you have any procedural guidance you wanna give us as we walk through this item and the subsequent items?
Yeah, I, I think it's important that we go over a couple of procedural issues, since we're gonna vary, just, just vary slightly from how we usually do things. You've got five items on the agenda before you tonight. As, as you've already seen, the chairman will read the agenda item, a motion will be made, we've given the motion, understanding what the motion's gonna be, and then a second will be made. Once the second is made, it's on the floor for discussion, so that you may discuss it. During this period, if you wanna make an amendment, it's, this is when you'll make it. If amendment is made and seconded, you'll vote on the amendment. If the amendment passes, then you'll vote on the motion as amended. If the amendment fails, you're just voting on the original motion.
Good.
Now, I've advised the superintendent not to make recommendations, basically because the law says that, basically because the law states that it's the Board of Education that, that the authority rests with. Last thing is, if there's any question as to what effect a particular vote on a question is, please let me know before a vote is taken, so that I can clarify any, any confusion. Ms. Chairman?
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, we do have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Wyatt.
I have read all five books we're reviewing this evening. Let me start by saying, being a teenager is exhausting and exhilarating, and I was reminded of those erratic years. After reading these books, I just wanted to go and hug a teenager. My commentary applies to all five books, but I'm not planning to repeat it. Although I understand the concerns about certain subjects, I place a higher priority on trusting the librarians and parents in our community to do their jobs. Based upon my review, considering the state statute and decision tree, I think the books are consistent with our educational mission and appropriate in their current libraries. Parents do not want us to take away these reading options for their children. A small group should not-
I'm sorry, my order. Mr. Chair, would you please ask the audience not to stand up and begin to vote?
No, we can just sign them. He's avoiding.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask again respectfully that we not have any distractions from the audience. That includes holding up signs, that includes people standing up, walking towards the podium. We all need to respect each other and be courteous tonight, this, we have a long meeting ahead of us, we have some important discussions ahead of us. Please, once again, be respectful of the process. Ms. Wyatt, you may resume. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Parents do not want us to take away these reading options for their children. A small group should not eliminate options for our entire community. The subjects discussed are happening in our world and community. Reading prepares our students to think critically and be tomorrow's leaders. Our professional librarians and teachers are well-trained and thoughtful. I support those assessment, their assessments of these books. Also, we have a policy in place, and our librarians are ready to work with parents who have concerns about certain materials. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any further discussion on the motion? Mr. Welch.
Thank you. May I ask a question of our attorney, Ms. Carson?
Ms. Carson, would you mind approaching?
Ms. Carson, thank you for that very detailed and well-thought-out explanation of what we're doing tonight. To simplify it, the purpose here, if you would verify for me, is to reconsider these books, and we've been mandated to do so by the courts. Is that inaccurate?
That's correct. The court has, has directed the board to answer the questions posed by the Age Appropriate Materials Act.
Okay. And has the court mandated a specific determination for each book that we must vote to remove or retain each book?
No, the court has simply ordered that the board must address the decision in the context of whether the books are age-appropriate and whether they're consistent with the educational mission as to each book. But the decision as to the answers to those questions is left to the board. And of course, the, the court has directed you to comply with the act, but in the context of the act, it is your determination as to whether those standards are met or are not met.
Certainly, using the decision tree, per our, per our policy, using decision tree, the recommendation-
Your policy, recommendations of librarians, whatever other resources are available to you, and applying the state law.
Exactly. My recollection is, too, is that you said we are required to assume state law is, meets the, meets the, the federal constitutional standard unless proven otherwise.
Right. Basically, under, under Tennessee law, you are required to presume that any enactment of the General Assembly is constitutional unless a court declares it otherwise. That said, you are expected, when you can, to construe a stat, to apply a statute in a constitutional manner.
And in reality, you and your partners have expressed personal feelings that the law itself is actually constitutionally suspect.
Well, I've expressed a concern that the law as applied could run afoul of the Constitution.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Carson? Thank you, appreciate clarification. As Melissa Wyatt, as Ms. Wyatt said, I'm not going to repeat everything each time, but I also read all five books. I would have no issues with my own high school children reading any of these books on their With one exception, these are all books at the high school level only. And in the high school, we're preparing young adults to go out into the world and be full-fledged members of society. Myself, three weeks after I graduated, I joined the military. So we're preparing adults. There's a lot of sort of conversation over the past year and past couple of years about parental rights. And on this, I think it's very clear. Parents have the right to restrict any book from their child if they want to. I've voted for that policy repeatedly, I, I support that policy. I don't think you even need a reason why if you don't feel a book is appropriate for your child. But when you start telling me what books my children can't read, that's stepping on my parental rights. And saying that, "Well, you can buy the book on Amazon or somewhere else," is, for me, it's, it's a massive misunderstanding of what the purpose of a school library is for. I've read all five books. I think they meet the, support the educational mission of Williamson County schools, and I believe they're age-appropriate. Thank you.
Mr. Bostic?
Yeah, I would, as someone mentioned here earlier, I mean, there is no constitutional right to obscenity, particularly for children in a school setting. I find that to be a little, you would think it would be obvious, but apparently it's not. I've asked many people, as they've sent emails and conversed with me, saying, you know, "We're just reading, they're just reading, there's no, it's not like there's pictures, it's not like there's video." To which my argument would ask them, "Well, given your logic, is there any limit at all to what a student can read in a school setting in any way?" To their credit, at least they're consistent, they would say, "No." I mean, that's shocking. No limit whatsoever to what a child, a minor, can read in a school setting. Let me just give a little- Let me just give a little excerpt from this book so we all know exactly what we're talking about here. This is from page 192 of Extremely Loud and Incredibly Close. It says, "He said, quote, 'Hey, Oscar, would you rather have a handjob or blowjob from Emma Watson?'" I told him I didn't know who Emma Watson was. Matt Colber said, "Hermione retard." I said, "Who's Hermione?" And I'm not mentally retarded. David Mallon said, "And Harry Potter, fag boy." Steve Wicker said, "She has sweet tits now." Jake Riley said, "Handjob or blowjob?" I said, "I've never even met her." I know a lot about birds and bees, but I don't know very much about the birds and the bees. Everything I do know, I had to teach myself on the Internet because I don't have anyone to ask. For example, I know that you give someone a blowjob by putting your penis in their mouth. I also know that dick is penis and that cock is penis, too. And monster cock, obviously. I know that VJs get wet when a woman is having sex, and although I don't know what they get wet with, I know that VJ is cunt and also ass. I know that what dildos are, I think, but I don't know what cum is exactly. I know that anal sex is humping the anus, but I wish I didn't." That's just one excerpt. I've got many here chosen. I read the, all five books in their entirety, not just excerpts, didn't just go online and book-look it up to see what people are saying. I read them all because I wanted the context and everything. I don't know how you read that and think that that in any way complies with the state law. And I don't know how anyone reads that and determines that that's appropriate for a minor to read in a school setting in a publicly-funded education system. And beyond the state law, I don't know how that complies with the mission of our school system for education. I think to argue opposite that seems asinine to me. Additionally, people say that, you know, I've heard it argued several times tonight, well, you don't have a right to restrict my child, and parents have different choices on what to expose their kids to, and this and that and whatnot. And I, you can expose your kids, I guess, to whatever you want in your home. I don't think anybody has a right to expose their children to pornography, but maybe you want to argue that they do. Fine. I guess if you want to do that in your home, you can. When it comes to this opt-out policy that people are talking about, that's incumbent upon every parent to know every single book and its contents in the school. If anything, there should be an opt-in. If anything, if we were going to keep them in there, should be opt-in so that you could opt-in to subject your child to this in a school setting. I'm voting to remove this book. Thank you.
Mr. Cash, before I come to you, can I again, once again, ask the audience to please limit the outbursts, the reactions? Again, we've got people on both sides of these issues in the audience. We've got people who feel strongly one way or the other. That's perfectly fine. But we've got a lot of discussion to get through. We've got four more books after this one. So please, if you can, keep your feedback and your comments to yourself, just for the purpose of getting us through this and out of respect for those who are speaking. Mr. Cash?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank my colleague, Mr. Bostic. He stole some of my thunder. But I will say, since I've got the mic, I've read these books. There's some literary value, but we've still got a lot to stand by. And this book goes against the laws, and it actually goes against what our mission, I feel, our mission is. So I will be a no vote on this book also. Thank you.
Are there any further comments on the motion? Dr. Reeves?
I want to reiterate that this isn't about how we feel about the books in question or whether or not we would let our children read these books. We are tasked with not taking a knee-jerk approach, but thoughtfully and objectively evaluating each book on the criteria established by the law. And so I would like to ask each of you, as we go through these books, if you could specifically state, reference the statute, and what is it that is, makes the book meet the requirement in the law? I think that would be particularly helpful to us, to us all. I also would like to note that, you know, we do have our librarians' recommendations here. And for this particular book, it's not clear to me how the librarians apply the statutory criteria in the law. And I'd like to ask if there are future reconsideration requests, that it would be very helpful for our librarians to specifically address the criteria in the law when they make these recommendations. Thank you.
Bostic?
Just to comply with my colleague, Ms. Reeves here. This would be, under the law code 39-17-901, Section 14, sexual cond- conduct, meaning patently offensive representations or depict descriptions of ultimate sex acts, normal or perverted, actual or simulated. Sexual act is simulated when it depicts explicit sexual activity and gives that appearance of ultimate sexual acts, anal, oral, or genital. Also, sexual excitement, I don't, I won't read it, patently offensive, there's others, and certainly more examples in this book we could give, too, if that's needed.
Have any other comments? I would just say for my, for myself, just to give my own personal perspective on this, if you look at, and this goes to the question Dr. Reeves asked, certainly in our policy, Section 2D, which is also part of what Mr. Bostic just referenced, I mean, despite all of the literary value of this book that there may be, and I certainly think there is some literary value to it for lots of reasons, but if we are holding ourselves to the state law, it's unfortunately hard to get around at least a couple of instances of Section 2D being violated. And again, trying to look at it very objectively, just one person's perspective. Any further comments before we go to a vote? Mr. Welch?
I just want to add, we should tread very lightly here as we open up Pandora's Box. If the standard that you want to use and label is asinine, those who disagree with you, Tony, is to read one section out of context because it cha, because it includes challenging material, there is a large list of classical American literature and religious texts that include violence and sexual content. This is quite the standard you are setting moving forward, and I would think through the implications of that.
Thank you. Can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
So thank you for this, and sorry for the little bit of technical difficulties. So I just wanted to, I just want to open and say that we had received feedback, lots of it, and I appreciate that, for everybody to be emailing in their opinions. But I want to say that it was primarily either for removing all the books or not removing, quote-unquote, banning any of the books. And so I wanted to thank one individual who, and it's the only, it's the only email, there may be others, but it's the only one that stuck out to me as being very thoughtful. And this individual called upon us to evaluate the books in accordance with our policy and all applicable laws. Quite frankly, that's what we're here to do. And so I appreciate people who objectively can, can look at the criteria and say that they've evaluated each of these books and come to that conclusion. But that's what we're here to do. And so based on, after reading all of these books myself, I am thankful that the state provided us with the guidance that was not available to us when we made these decisions initially. I want to thank Lisa Carson and all of those who defended our decision, that with the best information that we had at the time, but unsuccessfully defended the district from removing a long list of books that was part of the lawsuit that were challenged from another state and kept us from being required to remove these books as well as those. So I do appreciate that effort. And I agree that that money, those lawsuit money, was not, was not spent in vain, although at any point in time after the new policy was created, the plaintiffs had the ability to file a complaint under this policy and completely remove the case from the courts. But that being said, after I reviewed these books, and in accordance with all federal and state laws, I do find that some of them meet the requirements to, that are age-appropriate under our criteria, and some do not. As it relates to Extremely Loud, I actually, when I read the book, not only, I think lots of these meet the educational mission of the schools, that was not the point at which some of these failed for me. But in my opinion, this does not, subjectively, represent the patently offensive descriptions of sexual acts. Even as I, even as I listened to the passage from, from Mr. Bostic, it had a lot of the language, but what I, what I heard there and what I read in the book itself was not, did not meet the criteria as I, as I objectively looked at it, and subjectively looked at it according to the law. So I am going to, I'm going to vote to keep this book. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to speak in? Okay. Dr. Driggers?
I have a question for their attorneys. Doesn't the law, age-appropriate materials as amended, say if any part of the book is found failing, then the entire book fails?
Let me call on Ms. Carson to come up and answer that, please.
So that, you're correct. The act does refer to in whole or in part. But I believe what Mr. Galbraith was referring to was the definition specifically with relation to sexual content doesn't just mean any sexual content. It's actually defined as patently offensive representations or depictions of ultimate sexual acts, normal or perverted, actual or simulated. And then it goes on, so it's a detailed description that isn't just any mention of sexual acts or even a very vulgar mention of sexual acts. It has to meet that specific definition. But you are correct that the statute does say if it contains that patently offensive material, either in whole or in part, it would be in violation of the statute to retain it.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any? Mr. Bostic?
Yeah. So under the law, there's also just Section 11, so 14A and B, but Section 11 is just patently offensive alone, means that which goes substantially beyond customary limits of candor in describing or representing such manners. I would think of the passage I just read, although while I guess you could argue that it doesn't detail it out explicitly, would certainly go against beyond customary limits of candor.
All right. One more call for comments or questions on this book. Okay, we-
Mr. Chair, if I, there's one other, one other request to speak.
Sorry, Mr. Beasley.
Yes, right before we vote, I was just wanting to make you to clarify what we're actually voting on after hearing all the commentary. I did read all five books, and I did use my decision-making tree, and I know there were some constituents out there that was curious if all board members did that, and I think they specifically asked me if I did it. And I did, so I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will do just what you asked, when I'm sure we don't have any more comments before we vote. Mr. Gold, do you have a comment?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. As Mr. Cook mentioned, I've been advised not to give you any advice, and that's unusual for me, because if, for those of you who come to these meetings, you know I regularly do, I did want to make this one comment. Thank you all for taking this seriously. Part of this includes your individual judgment as elected officials, and I very much appreciate you going through this exercise because it's not simply an exercise. This is substantive, and I thank you all for your commitment. Again, Mr. Cook, without me giving a recommendation.
Okay, to the question that Mr. Beasley asked, before we go to a vote, to be clear on what we're doing, a yes vote on this motion, and I'm going to restate the motion just for everyone's benefit. The motion was, in response to the objection raised to Extremely Loud and Incredibly Close, I, Mr. Bostic, move that the book be removed from Williamson County Schools' library collections because it is not appropriate for the age and maturity levels of the students who have access to it and/or is not consistent with the educational mission of Williamson County Schools. A yes vote on this motion agrees that the book should be removed. A no vote says that you think the book should not be removed, and it would remain in the library accessible to the students who currently have access to it. Are we clear? All right, we're ready to vote. Mr. Galbraith, can you turn your video on and give us a verbal vote, please? Yes, thank you.
All right, thanks.
The vote is nine yes, three no.
Okay, the book is removed from the library. All right, we will now move on to the second item on the agenda. This book is The Field Guide to the North American Teenager. I'll again read what we're tasked with, determination of whether the following library book is appropriate for the age and maturity levels of the students who may access the books in Williamson County School Libraries, and whether the book is consistent with the educational mission of Williamson County Schools. Is there a motion? If someone has a motion, please do so on your device. Do we have that queued up, gentlemen?
Next.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Hibma, a second by Dr. Reeves. Ms. Hibma, would you please state your motion?
In response to the objection raised to, hang on a second, The Field Guide to the North American Teenager, I move that the book be removed from Williamson County School Library Collections because it is not appropriate for the age and maturity levels of the students who have access to it and/or is not consistent with the educational mission of the Williamson County Schools.
Okay, that's an appropriate motion. You second that, Dr. Reeves? Okay. Any discussion on this item? Any discussion on this item? Okay, we will, I'm sorry.
I'm going to get Mr. Galbraith's vocal vote before we vote. It's the only way I can turn into my phone.
Okay. Mr. Galbraith, do you have a comment, or are you just queued up to vote?
I'm ready to vote when you are.
Okay, so do we have, okay, Dr. Driggers?
To be clear, if a book is removed from the library, it's also removed from the holdings in the teacher's classroom libraries?
Mr. Chair, if I may answer that?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, if I may answer that, yes. If, based on the nature of this vote, if you all determine that it's not appropriate for the age of the students, then we will remove it from the school.
Thank you.
Dr. Reeves?
I feel like I would be remiss if, you know, we didn't have any discussion about this book before taking the vote. And so, again, this is not a fun position to be in, but if I objectively apply the law here, I did not see an nudity in this book, no discussion of nudity. Were there references to kissing and, you know, making out and kids having sex after prom and cars? Yes, but it wasn't explicit, it wasn't described in an explicit manner. Is there a lot of profanity in language in this book? Yes, there is, but that's not one of the considerations that's spelled out in the statute. So, the most offensive thing I found about this book is just it's poorly written. I didn't, you know, I didn't really enjoy it, but I don't think that it meets any of the criteria spelled out by the Age Appropriate Materials Act. And if anybody disagrees with me, I would love to hear why.
Mr. Beasley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is some mature content in some of this in the book, some vulgar language. This is not the main theme of the book, therefore, it should be kept in the libraries according to the Tennessee Age Appropriate Materials Act. So, that's the way I'm voting.
Thank you. Mr. Galbraith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with everything that Dr. Reeves said. Specifically, on this book, I guess what I would be, what I would actually be open to is determining at what age, because of the language and the, that's involved in here, I'd actually be, I'm really interested if anyone is open to just restricting the age ban on this language, just something other than high school, whether it's 10th grade or above or other. If anybody else is, is interesting in having that discussion, but that's kind of where my head was at as I read this. It's not, it doesn't meet the criteria to remove the book altogether, but from an appropriateness of age, based on the profanity specifically, that's where I'm thinking. So I'm open to listening to everybody's discussion.
Speaking, I don't see anyone else who's asked to speak at the moment, so speaking as one board member, not as the chair, I want to say that, again, if we're consistent on applying the law, I did not find a blatant or explicit violation of the law in this book, but certainly the language, certainly some of the themes are very mature. So I move to amend the motion as follows. In response to the objection raised to, make sure I say it right, The Field Guide to the North American Teenager, I move that the book be available only to grade levels 11 and 12, because while it is consistent with the educational mission of the schools, it's not appropriate for the age and maturity levels of the students who have access to it in grade levels below 11, grade 11. Is there a second on that motion? Second by Mr. Galbraith, any discussion of the amendment? Is there any discussion of the amendment? Okay, we're going to proceed to a vote on the amendment, and just to be clear, a yes, Ms. Wyatt, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Although I do not think books should be removed, I think some access is better than none, so I will vote in favor of the amendment allowing access for grades 11 and 12.
Thank you. Any further comments on the amendment? Okay, before we proceed to a vote, to be clear, a yes vote on the amendment is to agree to restrict access to the book to only grades 11 and 12. A no vote is to not restrict to only grades 11 and 12. Is that clear?
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, at this point, you're just voting to amend the motion to make that statement, you're not actually voting to adopt that motion?
Right, to adopt the amendment.
Right.
That would amend the motion, yes, thank you, that, okay.
And, Mr. Chair, just for clarity's purposes as well, I don't think my microphone's on. Just for clarity's purposes as well, the board shows that Mr. Beasley made the motion to amend, but in fact, you did. So just, oh, you actually hit the button, okay.
No, I didn't see the button, too.
Yeah, I did, it didn't appear.
It didn't appear, but I spoke it out.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, so do you have the motion and the second on the amendment captured?
I do.
Okay. All right, we will go to our iPads to vote on the amendment. Is there any? Just to restate it one more time, the amendment would amend the original motion to say that this book would be restricted only to 11th and 12th graders. A no vote would say you do not agree with restricting only to those two grades. We're ready to vote.
Jay first, can Jay go first and then?
Yeah, we'll let Jay go first. Jay, do you want to voice your vote on this?
Vote yes to the amendment.
Thank you.
The vote is 11 yes, one no.
Okay, the amendment is adopted, so we're back on the original motion, which is effectively the same as the amendment in terms of the effect of the vote. So the motion now, as amended, would be to the book, a yes vote is to restrict this book to only 11th and 12th graders. A no vote is to leave the book with the current access it has to all high school students. There is not a vote to remove the book from its entirety as part of this vote any longer because of the amendment. Is that clear? Okay. Okay, because of the amendment, we're no longer voting on removing the book in its entirety. A yes vote is either to restrict it to 11th and 12th grade only, a no vote is to leave it accessible to all high school age students. All right, we're ready to vote. Mr. Galbraith?
I vote yes.
Thank you.
The vote is 10 yes, two no.
Okay, the motion is adopted, this Field Guide to the North American Teenager will be restricted to those students in 11th and 12th grade. Board members, recognizing that we've been meeting now for over an hour and a half, does anyone desire to take a break now? Would you rather take a break after the third item on the agenda? Any strong preference? Okay, we'll take a 10-minute break and come back and start on item three.
Okay, we are going to resume the meeting with item C, which is the book Speak. Once again, it's the determination of whether the following library book, Speak, is appropriate for the age and maturity levels of the students who have acce-- may access the books in Williamson County School libraries and whether the book is consistent with the educational mission of Williamson County Schools. Is there a motion? Ms. Clements, you state your motion, please.
In response to the objection raised to speak, I move that the bor-- that the book be removed for the Williamson County School Library Collections because it is not appropriate, the age and maturity levels of the students who have access to it and/or is not consistent with the educational mission of Williamson County Schools.
Thank you. Mr. Beasley, are you the second on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Dr. Reeves?
All right, so, let's speak. As I read through Speak, you know, we evaluate these books as a whole or in part, and there were two main scenes that I felt needed to pay particular attention to with regards to the criteria spelled out in the law. So while there is a violent scene towards the end of the book where the main character faces her attacker, I would not define it as excessive violence, meaning the depiction of acts of violence in such a graphic or bloody manner as to exceed common limits of custom and candor, or in such a manner that is apparent that the predominant appeal of the material is portrayal of violence for violence sake. I think that that encounter was integral to the book and to the character deciding to live her life and come out of the depression she was in from experiencing a traumatic event. And so then the other scene in the book, which we need to pay particular attention to, is the description of, of the rape. And I also did not find that that met the criteria spelled out in the law. It wasn't graphic in any way, it did not describe any sexual acts, it did not describe sexual excitement, it is not patently offensive material, meaning that which goes substantially beyond customary limits of candor in describing or representing such matters. So that is where I made my determination. I think that this book should stay, but I would like to amend the motion to, as follows. In response to the objection raised to speak, I move that the book be available only to high school students, grades nine through 12, because while it is consistent with the educational mission of the schools, it is not appropriate for the age and maturity levels of the ste-- of the students who have access it, ass-- sorry. It is not appropriate for the age and maturity levels of the students who have access to it in grade levels below ninth grade.
That is a proper motion. Is there a second?
One second.
Second by Ms. Hibma. Any discussion on the amendment? Ms. Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, I will vote in favor of the amendment because I would rather have some access than none. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cash?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I see a lot of violence in the description from this book. Slamming, slamming the chest and knocking me back into the closet. The light flicks on, the door opens, and he's, she's trapped by this guy. If that's not violent, I don't know what is. He's big, she, she's describing him. He's, you know, of course, he's aggravated because of spreading lies. To save time, I'm not going to read every bit of it, but yeah, you're one strange bitch now that, now that, a freak. I can't believe anyone listens to you. He grabs her wrist, I try to pull them back, and he squeezes so tight, it feels like my bones are splintering. He pins me against the cloz-- closed door. My, Maya Angler looks at me. She tells me to make some noise. I open my mouth and take a deep breath. You're not going to scream. You don't scream before. You didn't scream before. You liked it. You're jealous that I took out your friend and not you. I think you, I know what you want. His mouth on my face, I twisted my head. Teeth knocked against my cheekbones. I pulled my arms again and slammed his body against mine. I have no legs, my heart's wobble, it wobbles. His teeth are stuck in my neck, the only sound I can make is whimper. He fumbles to hold both my wrists in one hand, he wants a free hand. I remember, I remember, metal hands. I mean, do we go on and finish this, this whole article here, this page? I follow the sound, pushing off the wall, pushing Andy Evans off balance, stumbling into a broken sink. He cursed and turns, his fist coming and coming. An explosion in my head and blood in my mouth. He hit me, I scream, I scream. A bowl, I throw it at him, it bounces to the floor. My books, he swears again. The door is locked, the door is locked. He grabs me, pulls me away from the door, one hand over my mouth, one hand around my throat. He leans me against the sink. My fists mean, mean nothing against him, just little rabbit paws. And this is the good part. My fingers wave overhead, looking for a branch, a limb, something to hang on, to block a wood, the base of my turkey bones sculpture. I slam it against Maya's poster. I hear a crunch, it doesn't hear. It breathes like a dragon. Its hand leaves my throat, attacks my body. I hit the wood against the poster, the mirror under it, again. Shards of glass slid down the wall into the sink. It pulls away from me, puzzled. I reach and wrap my fingers around a triangle of glass. I hold it to Andy Evans' neck. He freezes. I pushed, just hard enough to raise one drop of blood. He raises his arms over his head, my hand quivers. I want to insert the glass all the way through his throat. I want to hear him scream. I look up, I see the stubble on his chin, a fleck of white in the corner of his mouth. His lips are paralyzed, he cannot speak. That's good enough. Me, I said no. He nods. Someone pounding on the door, doors unlocked, swings open, and Nicole was there, along with the lacrosse team, sweaty and angry. There's all kinds of violence in this, and the same for the rape, the first time around. So, I mean, there's, it does, it does hit on a horrible subject and whatnot, but again, we have a law. And this is extreme, in my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Welch?
Thank you. I'll just like to read a little bit from the book, but I'm going to read from the epilogue, from the author. This is, "What Have You Learned From Your Readers' Reactions to This Book?" And it says, "Speak is a book about depression. That's why it has resonated so deeply for so many readers. Today's teens have to cope with massive amounts of stress and conflict. Way too many of them understand the pain, if not feeling it, they can speak up. This book reflects their experience and offers them hope." This book reflects their experience and offers them hope. And then, "Have any readers ever asked questions that shocked you?" It said, "I've gotten one question repeatedly from young men. These are guys who like the book, but are, they are honestly confused. They asked me, my Melinda was so upset about being raped. First dozen times I heard this, I was horrified, but I heard it over and over again. I realized that many young men are not being taught the impact that sexual assault has on women. They're getting into sexual imagery in the media and often come to the conclusion that having sex is not a big deal. It's no doubt it's why the number of sexual assaults is too so high. I am also shocked by adults who feel that rape is an inappropriate topic to discuss with teenagers. According to the U.S. Department of Justice, forty-four percent of rape victims are under the age of eighteen, and forty-six percent of those victims are between the ages of twelve and fifteen. It makes adults uncomfortable to acknowledge this, but our inability to speak clearly and openly about sexual issues endangers our children. It is not immoral to discuss this with them." I would dare say that everyone in here probably knows at least one person that's been the victim of sexual assault. Just statistically, looking at the length of room, I would, I would say that we probably have at least one or more people here who are victims of sexual assault themselves, which is horrible and awful, and I wish that wasn't the world we lived in. I wish we didn't need books like Speak. I really wish we didn't, but the reality is, you know, we live in this world. As we were talking about these books, got multiple emails from sexual assault survivors speaking in favor of Speak. Let's just read a couple short excerpts from this with the permission of the individuals who emailed me and without revealing any of their specific information. The first was from a graduate of Williamson County Schools who was groomed online by an older man. He said, "When I finished the book, I cried. I cried at what I realized was my lost innocence. I cried for the old me, the one who smiled and said what was on her mind when it was on her mind, who wasn't afraid of the shadows in the hallway. I cried for the new me, the one who knew it was her turn to regain her ability to speak. I held on to the book for so long as I could attempt to glean some sort of courage from Melinda." This is from another recent graduate. "I had a bad experience with a boy my age who took advantage of me without my full consent. After months of keeping it to myself and fighting this intense depression, I finally told my parents. My mom later gifted me the book Speak about a girl in high school who was sexually assaulted and learned to speak up. This book means a lot to me and still does. It made me feel less alone and validated my experience. When I saw it was being banned, all I could do is feel the injustice for the girls who needed to be encouraged to speak up about these things, these real things." Last one's not from a student, but from a parent of young kids. "If you are concerned about content, I would ask you to consider that there are students in your district that may have experienced sexual abuse or rape at the hands of a classmate, adults or family members. As a child sexual abuse survivor, I was silent about my abuse because the shame was overwhelming, and I felt that I somehow contributed to my abuse. I was eight. Our society has a history of blaming females for their abuse and not holding males accountable. Did not feel like I had agency or control in my life." I, I feel this is a very appropriate book. I feel it meets the educational standards, but I also feel it's an important book. It's an important book to have in our libraries, and I feel it's an important book to have in our middle school libraries. It's important for those individual students that need something like this. When you vote to take this book out of the library, you are voting to take this book away from those students that emailed us and said, "I was sexually assaulted. I needed this resource to help me find my own voice, to help me speak." And those individuals that emailed us, and you got them too, you got their emails as well, sent to the full board. Those are the individuals that spoke up. There's a lot more out there that we don't know about who haven't spoken up, who feel that sense of shame, who feel as the mother told us that they had somehow contributed to their abuse, which they didn't. I'm fifty-two, certain generation, and share a personal story. Years back, my wife and I sat down with our son, and we watched on TV Sixteen Candles. It was a movie from when I was young. I think a lot of us probably the same thing. It was a, you know, the Molly Ringwall, you know, children of the eighties, what have you. And as I'm watching it with my son, the funny scene where, or supposed to be funny scene, where the nerd takes the girl in the car, and she's drunk, and they wake up the next morning, and it's all good. And my son turns to me and goes, "He raped her." And he did, in that movie. That was a date rape, very clearly. He took it, in the movie, the Anthony Michael Hall character took advantage of a young lady that's, was unable to give consent. In my generation, when we watched it and everything, it was just a funny moment, because we knew it was okay, because the director told us the next day that it was okay, because she liked it. Thank God we're not like that anymore, and we've seen the errors of ways. And this is not about cancel culture, anything like that. This is about correcting errors in our culture, acknowledging that there are bad things that happen in the world, and we don't want them to happen. But they do happen. And the way that we deal with them shouldn't be we hide our heads in the sand, and we don't tell our children to be cautious. That's not good parenting. That's not responsible adulting to do that. Also heard that from some described Speak as pornographic, because it contained a rape scene. Now, it contains sexual content. There's, there's no doubt about that, hundred percent. So I went and I looked up the definition of pornography. This is the Merian Webster, if anyone else wants to pull it up themselves. Material such as books or a photograph that depicts erotic behavior and is intended to cause sexual excitement. So intended to cause sexual excitement, not just nudity or what have you. The rape scene comes on page one thirty-five. One thirty-five of a book that's less than two hundred pages in. At this point, we know about Melinda, we've made emotional connections to her, we know that she's suffering emotional trauma, we know what she's going through. We know that her friends have turned on her, that her parents and teachers don't understand, all because of this trauma that she's, some trauma that she suffered. We don't know what it is. On page one thirty-five, we had, we found out. "We are on the ground. When did that happen?" "No, no, I did not like this. I was on the ground, he was on top of me. My lips mumble something about leaving, about a friend who needs me, about my parents worrying. I can hear myself, I'm mumbling like a deranged drunk. His lips lock on mine, and I can't say anything. I twist my head away, he is so heavy. There's a boulder on me. I open my mouth to breathe, to scream, and his hands cover it. In my head, my voice is clear as a bell. No, I don't want to, but I can't spit it out. I'm trying to remember how we got to the ground, and where the moon went, and wham, shirt up, shorts down, and the ground smells wet and dark, and no, I'm not really here. I'm definitely back at Rachel's crimping my hair, and gluing on fake nails, and he smells like beer and mean, and he hurts me, he hurts me, he hurts me, and gets up." If you read that, and you think that that is intended to cause sexual excitement, seek help. Seriously. If you read that passage, and you think that's erotic and meant to sexually arouse me, seek help. It is not. It is meant to illustrate something that actually happens, that happens to our students. We have emails from them, that happens to our students. It happens to our students. And hiding our heads in the sand, pretends it doesn't happen, and saying, "Well, they can go and they can get the book on Amazon if they want." It's not leadership and courage. And it's not just for women, it's for young men. No man has ever raped a woman because of this book. But we just might stop a date rape because of it. So I, I find this book very supportive of the educational mission. I find it appropriate for all grade levels. I'll be honest, even if I didn't, I still would vote to keep it in the library because it's an important book that our kids need. And they've told us themselves in their own writings to all of us. So please, do not take away this resource from our sexual assault survivors.
Dr. Reeves? I'm sorry.
Mr. Cass, I just wanted to respond to you, and I agree, there is violence in the book, but the, the definition of violence per the statute is excessive violence, meaning the depiction of acts of violence in such a graphic or bloody manner as to exceed common limits of custom and candor. And so unfortunately, as objective as we try to be about these things, there is a little bit of subjectivity in it, and you and I clearly disagree on what the definition of excessive violence means for this book. So that's all I wanted to say. I, I stand by my motion that I wanted to respond to you.
Dr. Driggers?
Yeah, I'd like to add to Dr. Reeves and Mr. Welch. We all got the message he referenced, but I also got a telephone call, private call from a mother whose daughter was sexually assaulted in the Williamson County School System, and she said that she and her daughter read this book and it helped them. So my question is, I'm in favor of keeping the book in all grades in the high school because these girls were both sexually assaulted as freshmen, what, ninth grade and one in eleventh grade. So how do we balance that with what Dr. Reeves proposed, that we limit it to the eleventh or twelfth grade?
Her motion is to, to limit to high school students only, so ninth, ninth through twelfth.
Oh, okay. I'm done. No. We had the same message.
Dr. Johnson?
And this question may be for the lawyer. In the law, it talks about sadomasochistic abuse, but it defines it as means, flagellation, or torture, or physical restraint by or upon a person for the purpose of sexual gratification of either person. Does that include sexual assault and rape? If you're physically restraining a person?
Ms. Carson?
I, I think that's really something, this, this is gonna sound like a real lawyer answer, but, but ultimately, thank goodness the citizens of Williamson County didn't elect me to make the determination. I, I think that's something that you have to decide for yourself. My reading of the statute, because of the way that it breaks apart the different per se prohibited categories, would not be that any discussion of rape is prohibited sadomasochistic abuse. I, I read that portion of the statute as a, a presentation of graphic detail about torture porn kind of discussion, but it's certainly open to interpretation. I think that if you took it to the, to the most literal extreme, any book that even mentioned a sexual assault would be prohibited. And while I can't speak for the legislator's intent, that would, that would remove a lot of classic literature. And so my opinion is it's certainly a reasonable interpretation not to extend the definition of sadomasochistic abuse to apply to any discussion of rape.
And then, this isn't for you, this is just a statement. Having three children from adoption and knowing how trauma affects people, I know when I read pages one thirty-five, and like I said, knowing what I know about particularly foster children, adoption children, children who have faced trauma, this would be very triggering for them, and that would be a concern that I have for this book.
Mr. Galbraith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just wanna, I wanna point out the, the fact that we, based on, based on the law, case law, it says that we can't restrict this book because of the, because of the content, the subject matter. And so I think, so I guess, but we also can't keep it just because of the, of the importance of that subject matter to our, to our students. So the, the manner in which the, the author describes these delicate topics, I think, was rather tastefully done, was definitely not, was definitely not patently offensive description of these acts. It, I've read a lot of materials and, and kind of reviews on, on this topic, and, and I guess everybody, there's, there's not, there's no, I didn't take anybody's necessary review as my, as my own, but, but I think the, a lot of people agree with that, with that explanation, and especially as we're talking about the, the next two books, and I, I look at these, the, the depictions are, and the way in which they're depicted are very important. So the, the, the subject matter itself, I mean, just lends itself that you're going to have to have some descriptions of these things in, in some amount of detail, but to me, it did not meet the, it did not violate the, the standard set by the state. And so, but I, but I agree with Dr. Reeves' motion that it should be limited to, to ninth grade and above. Thank you.
Mr. Beasley?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. So do I need to speak to the amendment now, or if I have comments regarding the, the first motion, do I need to wait until we go back to that motion in order for me to give comment on that?
Yeah, any comments now would be on the amendment, which is to restrict to high school students only.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Clements?
Oh, okay. That was fast. You know, this book was powerful, it was heavy, and I could understand we're pulling it out of the middle school shelves. But again, when you, when we touch on a subject as rape, I really wanna tread lightly because it can be triggering for people. It, it, we've all known people very close to us that have experienced this. And so I know this is not a possibility in this meeting, but I, I think this might be something that we would wanna consider having for mature, or parental approval, and I say this because at the end of the book, they interview the author, and they said, "What would you say to those parents who are pushing for Speak to be banned?" She said, "I would ask them, 'Why are they afraid to talk to their kids about sexual violence? Parents must face up to their responsibilities to prepare their children for the dangers of the world. They must get over their un-squeamishness about discussing human sexuality. In order to do so, if more boys were taught by their parents what, what sexual consent is and what, and that is always required, we will have less sexual violence. If girls and women felt safer to speak up after sexual assault and the judicial system was prepared to consistently prosecute and punish rapists, then we begin to see an end to these, these horrible numbers go down." So some parents cringe at the idea of talking to their kids about these things. I have no patience for that. Who do they want to be educating or miseducating their children about these things? Music videos, internet porn, locker room BS? It's hard to be a parent. It's a whole lot harder to be a parent of a kid who has been sexually assaulted or is in jail, in jail after being found guilty of sexual assault. Speak opens up the doors to some of the most important conversations that family will ever have. And this is a very heavy topic, and I know we can't tonight put this on a parental approval list, but knowing just what data tells us about sexual assault and what even young children are exposed to, it would be really pertinent for parents to have knowledge that their child is reading a book about rape and about date rape. And so I, I know that, I just wanna put a pin in that for future, going forward.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions on the amendment? Okay, then we are ready to vote on the amendment. Mr. Galbraith, we'll take your vote first. Just to, just to be clear-
Yes.
Sorry. I didn't, I didn't say it in time. Just to, just to state for the record-
That's okay.
A yes vote on the amendment is to restrict access to this book to high school only. A no vote is to leave it as the current access to middle school and high school.
I'd still vote yes.
All right, thank you.
The vote is eight yes, four no.
The motion carries. So we are now back on the original motion as amended. So the, the motion on the floor as amended is to allow the book to remain in the library, in the school libraries for high school students only. Are there any comments on the main motion? Mr. Beasley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, I think our library should be a free space for kids to go and explore and learn about different topics. Maybe they're embarrassed about, or maybe embarrassed about topics that they don't wanna completely ask their parents about right off the bat, but I thought this was a great book, personally myself. I think youth should be informed. I think Speak does an excellent job of addressing the content of sexual assault, rape, without being aggressive or violent in nature, or inappropriately explicit. So I would vote that we keep the book on the shelves.
Thank you. Any other comments on the motion? Okay, we will proceed to a vote, and just again, to state for the record, the, a yes vote on the motion as amended is to keep the book in the libraries, access to high school students only. A no vote is to keep it access to high school and middle school. Am I saying that right? Okay. Mr. Galbraith?
Yes. I vote yes.
The, a yes vote is to restrict, keep access to the book only for high school students. A no vote is to allow it to remain accessible to both high school and middle school. Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
The vote is eight yes, four no.
Okay, eight yes, four no, the motion passes, so the, the book Speak will be accessible, will remain in the libraries, accessible to high school students only. Okay, we will now move on to item D, Perks of Being a Wallflower. Determination of whether the following library book, The Perks of Being a Wallflower, is appropriate for the age and maturity levels of the students who may access the books in Williamson County School Libraries, and whether the book is consistent with the educational mission of Williamson County Schools. Is there a motion? Mr. Bostick, will you state your motion, please?
In response to the objection raised to Perks of Being a Wallflower, I move that the book be removed from Williamson County School Library collections because it is not appropriate for the age and maturity levels of the students who have access to it and/or is not consistent with the educational mission of Williamson County Schools.
Thank you. Ms. Clements, you second? All right. Motion is on the floor. Is there any discussion? Any discussion of the motion to remove Perks of Being a Wallflower entirely from the libraries? Okay, then we are ready to vote. Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Okay, if it, if it wasn't clear, this motion is to remove the books, this book, entirely from the libraries, a yes vote would, would do that. A no vote would allow the book to remain in the high school libraries only where it's currently accessible. Mr. Galbraith votes yes. Let's, rest of us please proceed to vote.
The vote is ten yes, two no.
Motion carries. Perks of Being a Wallflower is removed from Williamson County Schools Libraries. Our final item, item E, Where the Crawdads Sing, Determination of Whether the Following Library Book, Where the Crawdads Sing, is Appropriate for the Age and Maturity Levels of the Students Who May Access the Books in Williamson County School Libraries, and Whether the Book is Consistent with the Educational Mission of Williamson County Schools. Is there a motion? Mr. Bostick?
In response to the objection raised to Where the Crawdads Sing, I move that the book be removed from Williamson County School Library collections because it is not appropriate for the age and maturity levels of the students who have access to it and/or is not consistent with the educational mission of Williamson County Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Dr. Johnson, you second? Okay. Any discussion of that motion? Dr. Johnson?
One thing I wanna share with everyone is even the librarian who reviewed this book, she recognized that under the recently passed state law, that it would meet the requirement that is not appropriate for age and maturity level of a student in any grades K through twelve.
Mr. Welch?
Sorry, I'm finding the space. The librarian who reviewed Where the Crawdads Sing for question eight, is this material age appropriate for the age and maturity level of students? Is that material? Well, let me start here and say, you know, is the material suitable for and consistent with the educational mission? Yes. Critical reading and writing, think required, students dig deep into complex texts. Students will be immersed in the novel's powerful story while challenged by themes, imagery and writer's craft. Curriculum uses for book includes text analysis, summary, character, theme.
Mr. Welch, can you speak up just a tad, please?
I'm sorry. Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. The librarian, actually, and I'm sorry, I've, I've missed my place, I wasn't ready for that. To the point that the librarian said it wasn't suitable, my understanding is the librarian actually said it was age appropriate for the age, but questioned, but did question whether it would comply with the current law. So I think that's fair. They, she did, here it is. "My professional recommendation is that Where the Crawdads Sing is appropriate for high school students." So I, I think we should probably clarify that her professional recommendation was not that it wasn't age appropriate. She did say, "However, I recognize under recently passed state law, it would meet the requirement that it's not appropriate for-" that it's not appropriate for age and maturity level. So she gave her legal opinion that it was inappropriate. She gave her professional opinion, as a librarian, that it was appropriate for high school students. And while I appreciate the legal opinion of the librarian, it's not what we asked her to do, we have legal counsel for that. So I think that's important clarification we should make on that, that the librarian did not say that it was inappropriate for high school students.
Mr. Bostick?
This is from page 134. He took her shoulders and pushed her firmly against the tree. Holding her arms along her sides, he kissed her, his groin pushing against hers. Since Christmas, they had kissed and explored slowly, not like this. He had always taken the lead, but had watched her questioning for signs to desist, not like now. He pulled away, the deep golden brown layers of his eyes boring into hers. Slowly, he unbuttoned her shirt and pulled it off, exposing her breasts. He took his time to examine them with his eyes and fingers circling her nipples. Then he unzipped her shorts and pulled them down until they dropped to the ground. Almost naked for the first time in front of him, she panted and moved her hands to cover herself. Gently, he moved her hands away and took his time looking at her body. Her groin throbbed, as if all of her blood had surged there. He stepped out of his shorts and, still staring at her, pushed his erection against her. When she turned away in shyness, he lifted her chin and said, "Look at me, look at me in the eyes, Kaia. Tate, Tate." She reached out, trying to kiss him, but he held her back, forcing only her eyes to take him in. She didn't know raw nakedness could bring such want. He whispered his hands against her inner thighs, and instinctively, she stepped each foot to the side slightly. His fingers moved between her legs and slowly massaged parts of her she never knew existed. She threw her head back and whimpered. Page 184. Drifting offshore on a hot day a few months after they met, he said it was a perfect time for a swim. "I won't look," he said, "take off your clothes and jump in, then I will." She stood in front of him, balancing in the boat, but as she pulled her T-shirt over her head, he didn't turn away. He reached out and ran his fingers lightly across her firm breasts. She didn't stop him. Pulling her closer, he unzipped her shorts and slipped them easily from her slender hips. Then he took off his shirt and shorts and pushed her down gently onto the towels. Kneeling at her feet, without saying a word, he ran his fingers like a whisper along her left ankle and up to the inside of her knee, slowly along the inside of her thigh. She raised her body towards his hand. His fingers lingered at the top of her thigh, rubbed over her panties, then moved across her belly, light as a thought. She sensed his fingers moving up her stomach toward her breasts and twisted her body away from him. Finally, he pushed her flat and slid his fingers to her breast, slowly outlining the nipple with one finger. He looked at her, unsmiling, and he moved his hand down and pulled at the top of her panties. She wanted him, all of him, and her body pushed against his, but seconds later, she put her hand on his. "Come on, Kaia," he said, "please, we've waited forever, I've been pretty patient, don't you think? Chase, you promised. Damn it, Kaia, what are we waiting for?" He sat up. "Surely, I showed you, I cared for you, why not?" There's some other passages as well, but I think that probably gets the point across.
Are there any other comments? Dr. Reeves?
I just want to mention that in contrast to the librarian's review for Extremely Loud and Incredibly Close, I appreciated this librarian's review, because she actually did go through each criteria that's spelled out in the statute. And she did find that, yes, there are descriptions of five consensual sexual acts, or near-sexual acts, and one non-consensual act of violence. And that was under the criteria about sexual excitement, meaning the condition of human male or female genital, when in a state of sexual stimulation or arousal. And that is what the law requires us to do.
Any other comments? Ms. White?
I just wanted to reread in entirety what the librarian said at the end. My professional recommendation is that Where the Crawdads Sing is appropriate for high school students. However, I recognize, under the recently passed state law, it would meet the requirement that it is not appropriate for the age and maturity level of a student in any of the grades K through 12. After the decision two years ago to keep the books in question, parents in the grade band were emailed with instructions to opt their student out of those titles. Three, Ravenwood families decided to opt out of some or all of the five titles for some or all of their children. Three. At any time, a student who has access to the book may choose to stop reading. Not every book is the right fit for every student. Ravenwood annually has a book madness contest, like we heard about earlier, similar to March Madness, where the thirty-two, the top thirty-two circulating titles of the year are matched up against each other in a bracket. Students can complete a bracket to choose who they think will win. Then students vote on their favorite books. In March of 2023, Where the Crawdads Sing won the championship round with 98 of 172
Mr. Bostick?
I mean, I have no doubt that Where the Crawdads Sing was probably voted as a favorite for pubescent teens in school. That's not shocking to me. I also, once again, as it comes to the question of parents opting in, you have to ask yourself that is the position of a school one of education and protection, or is the position of the school one of exposure to things that are offensive or explicit? I would argue that it's to educate and protect children, not expose them to sexual themes.
I don't see any other requests to speak, I'm just going to make a comment, again, not as the chair, but as a board member, that one of the things that, this book, probably of all the five, to me, has the most literary value and probably the most important story to tell, but again, because we're bound by the state law, it's pretty clear to me that at least section 2E, and probably section 2D, are violated by multiple passages in this book, and again, that's what we're being charged with, is applying the state law. So in spite of how good the book may be, and there certainly is a lot about the book that's very important and good, and all the ratings would verify that, unfortunately, we're bound by the state law, and I think there's too many explicit instances of violation of that law. Okay, if there are no other comments, we are ready to vote. Again, a yes vote on the motion is to remove the book from our school libraries, a no vote is to let it remain in the school libraries with access to high school students only. Mr. Galbraith, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Rest of us can proceed to vote.
The vote is ten yes, two no.
Okay, the motion carries, the book, Where the Crawdads Sing, is removed from Williamson County Schools libraries. That does complete our agenda. Thank you to the board members and to the members of the public who came out. We are adjourned.
Thank you.